Brian, is there a different link for people who want to watch?
Yeah, the people who want to watch would be just the link that's on the agenda.
Looks like we have zero attendees. That's why I was wondering.
That's because we have not broadcast yet.
Yeah, it's not broadcasting.
No attendees until we start broadcasting, so I can get everyone lined up.
No worries. Sorry about that.
Now we have Michelle.
Good question.
And we need, still need Chris. I have my Kit Kat for the night, in case I need it.
I have my pea rice.
I don't understand the taste, Brian. I think it's like always assumed that you need a little snack at night.
A bowl of cereal going.
Okay, so we are still just waiting for Chris.
See my new friend?
Oh, I like that.
It's a sloth. To keep me happy.
Is that a tea thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, of one that's a sea creature, an otter.
No, otter. They're so cute.
Yeah.
So, I know that Chris is traveling around, so I think we should broadcast and make sure he's not in the waiting room there. And then, so I'm gonna broadcast.
I'll look for him.
Thank you. Evening, everyone. We're just getting everything ready before we start the committee meeting tonight. I think we'll wait one, two more minutes to see if Mr. Nixon, I know he's trying to call in. And if he's unable to, then we'll start the meeting and he can join when he can, so let's give another two minutes for that.
Check one more time. I will. So, he, I'm just going to send him the link because he was just asking for it right now.
Okay, perfect. And I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, and then he can connect as soon as he can. Welcome to everyone. Wind Cam, are we good to go? I'll I'll take that you're in here as that we're good to go. I'd like to call to order our meeting of September 15th, being held remote through the Zoom platform due to COVID. I would like to point out that we originally had planned on being at Wind Cam, but because of some individuals were unable to make it tonight, we are decided that it wasn't worth having the meeting with just two committee members at the Wind Cam, so we are actually full remote. Eugenia tonight is called to order. I'm gonna actually switch a couple of agenda items. I'm gonna do, I'd like to do the student report prior to public comment, because we have our two students here now, and I know it's the night before the first day of school. So I'd like to give them an opportunity to go first, followed by public comment. We have reports and discussions item, COVID-19 metrics, protocols from the Health Department. We have return to school preliminary enrollment. We have personnel update. We have action items, vote to accept fee grants, and vote to approve MOAs for units B, C, and D. Chair report, superintendent report, future agenda items, and next meeting dates. So with that, I would like to move directly into the student report, so that Evan and Caroline can have a chance to get ready for their first day of school tomorrow. So I'd like to welcome you both, and thank you for coming. Sort of been a weird start to the year. I'd love to hear from you guys.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for inviting us again. Very excited. You can hear me, right? I just unmuted it.
Very well.
Okay, good. Yeah, we're excited for the first day tomorrow. It's gonna be all remote, starting at 9:30. We're gonna meet with five classes. So I think it should be good. We had on September 11th, we got a chance to meet with all of our classes and kind of talk on Zoom, which is kind of a good way to like introduce the classes. And then, as you know, on Thursday and Friday is the Group B is going into school for the first time, and then on Monday and Tuesday is the Group A, which will be me and Evan, going on Monday and Tuesday for the first time, so very excited to see how all that works out. Things have been pretty good. There were a little bit of scheduling issues that a lot of students had trouble with when Guidance Council started emailing students, talking about schedule changes, because a lot of stuff had to be moved, so that we could deal with the smaller class sizes. But I know they're also offering outside of school AP classes, so I think a lot of people are happy with that. Getting the opportunity to take those classes that they want to, that they might not be able to this year. So that's kind of on the academic side. I think Evan's gonna talk about more like clubs and sports.
Thank you. So, I was, thank you guys for having us, of course. I was actually in the school earlier today, giving tours to the freshmen and new students that had their orientation yesterday and today. So that was cool. They all got to come in and meet their teachers for the first time, see where their classrooms were, before they go into school with the rest of us in the coming days, as Caroline mentioned. In terms of athletics, I believe that all, I'm just speaking for myself here, but I think all of the athletics are starting on Monday, whether that be tryouts or real practices. I know, in my experience, our team will be split varsity and JV, so we'll be practicing separately. We'll have different schedules, different meets, stuff like that. So that we're not all in the same place at the same time. We can be as distant as possible, stuff like that. In terms of clubs also, a lot of clubs are working really hard to try to adapt to this. The biggest drawback for us is that we aren't allowed to have any meetings inside the school, whether that be after school or at any other time. So, we will be working to have meetings outside of school, whether that be over Zoom or on campus, socially distanced outside, stuff like that. So I know that a lot of different people are trying to get really creative about how this works. Some people are being very successful, and others are, we still have work to do. But I think we should be seeing a lot of creativity and a lot of improvisation this year.
Thank you. Thank you, both of you. Open it up to, first of all, if you have anything more to say, I didn't want to cut you off, but it sounded like you were done. The committee, have any questions or comments for Evan, Caroline? Ms. Bollinger?
I'll just, I don't particularly have a question, but thank you for the tours for the freshman, incoming freshman. I have one of those freshmen, although she was there yesterday, but we appreciate all that you do and all that you bring to the school. Thank you.
It's always my pleasure. It's really fun to give out the tours.
I would echo that as the parent of an incoming freshman as well, that they, they found the whole experience today rewarding, and mentioned how, in her, her words, you know, there were some older students there helping out, so she was very, very pleased. So thank you. I do have a question, if there are no more questions from the committee. Have you, did you get an opportunity to meet all of your teachers? What was it? Last week, last, or was it, I can't, I'm losing my mind now what day it was last, last week when they had
It was Friday.
Friday, thank you.
Friday, yeah.
Did you both have an opportunity to engage in that? I was curious how it was received?
Yeah, I got a chance to meet with all my teachers, except today I did get an email from a teacher that I didn't know I had, and I didn't meet with last week. I got, I think I got switched or something, something with an English teacher. I think there was an issue with that, so I haven't gotten to meet that teacher yet, but I'll meet him tomorrow. So, but other than that, I got a chance to meet all of them, which was really nice.
I have a similar situation. I got to meet all of mine, except for a conflict between two classes that I'm still working on figuring out. So, we all just got like a brief overview of what the class will be like and how we can prepare for the year.
Great. I'm glad that that was a success, and that you were able to, to make it through that with that many Zooms in such a short period of time. And I know, as a parent, we saw so many emails coming out, especially, I have two high schoolers, so I had so many Zoom links coming out, and I was, I'm glad to hear that it was able to be successful. So, any additional questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you, both of you. You, of course, are always welcome as members of the committee to stay on, but also as the night before the first night of school. Appreciate if you have other commitments tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, we, since we switched around, we move into public comment. Just to remind people that public comment is an opportunity for members of the community to express their opinions on issues under the purview of the school committee. It's not a dialogue, and it's not, it's not designed for us to answer your questions necessarily, but for you to raise questions potentially that we might choose to discuss later on during the meeting. I will ask that individuals use the raise hand feature of the Zoom, and we will call people who have raised their hands. We will try to limit public comment to a total of 20 minutes or three minutes per person. Obviously, the shorter your comments are, the more people we can get to. And with that, I'm going to, first, what I'd like to do is lower all hands, and then I would like to ask those people who would like to ask questions to raise their hands, and I will call on them. So, I am going to elevate Kristin Webb. Ms. Webb, if you could state your name and address for the committee?
Yes, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Very well.
Okay, great. Kristin Webb here. I live at 21 Glenwood Avenue in Winchester. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. I speak on behalf of more than 110 families, representing over 180 remote students enrolled in K through 5, who signed the letter that I will read this evening. I understand that there are 2,200 K through 5 students enrolled in WPS, and about 23% of them are now in full-time remote learning. With 180 students represented here by this letter, that's nearly 40% of the remote K through 5 families I speak for today. All references to literature and data points below have sources that are cited in the letter that was written and delivered and shared with the community, the school committee, and our superintendent of schools, Dr. Evans, on September 11th, 2020. This is where I will begin reading. "We're writing to express our concern about the evolution organization of the Winchester Remote Academy, aka Full Remote Option, which have become especially apparent to parents as teacher meetings have commenced. In this letter, we have distilled and organized these concerns according to the immediacy of action requested in three major sections. Section 1, the Full Remote Plan that was presented throughout August is not being delivered. With the start of the school year imminent, the Full Remote Educational Plan was abruptly changed and without notice or opportunity for parent feedback to one offering, only two days of remote synchronous learning at the elementary level. This schedule is a significant departure from that which was shared with parents and informed our decision to commit to the Full Remote Option. We ask that the school committee and superintendent revert to the framework and concepts that were shared at the time of this binding decision. We request your immediate attention to this critical topic before remote schedules are finalized. We believe corrective action must be taken prior to the start of school. The Preliminary Return to School Plan dated August 4th, 2020 stated that, 'While we are well-prepared for a full shift to remote learning, we would like to be clear that a Full Remote Option for some students will not mirror the Hybrid Model Options,' end quote. The Full Remote Plan for K through 5 that we were provided on August 18th, 2020, referenced, quote, 'All remote classes would consist of 18 to 24 students on average,' end quote. And unlike the grade 6 through 8 and grades 9 through 12 plans, made no reference to similar schedule for both hybrid and remote. As we understood the plan, it enabled consistency and reinforcement of learning over five days, while limiting the duration of time, our children would be in front of a screen on any given day. The new plan that we are hearing about from the teachers would concentrate screen time for their core classes now into two longer days, and leave a five-day gap in synchronous learning. This stands in stark contrast to the sample elementary Full Remote Schedule that was shared with us on August 4th, 2020, showing core curriculum classes meeting every day throughout the week. In fact, the Return to School Q and A document from August 7th, 2020 stated that, quote, 'We don't want any student sitting in front of the computer for six hours. That is not good practice or healthy,' end quote."
Ms. Webb, I, I will allow you, of course, to finish reading your letter, but I wanted to point out that three minutes have elapsed, so I would ask that you read, read as well as you can. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'll go faster. I'll put my speed up. "Parents agree, and we would like to note that this is confirmed by multiple relevant studies on the efficacy and best practices of virtual education delivery. There is strong evidence, in fact, that the long screen time per day is associated with multiple negative learning outcomes. A recent meta-analysis in the journal JAMA Pediatrics noted that while more, while high-quality educational screen content is associated with better language skills, more overall time on screens each day, regardless of its quality, is linked to lower language development. Parents have been provided varying rationales for the new remote plan, including: 1. Access to and scheduling with specialists; 2. Equity to the hybrid plan; and 3. Pacing concerns relative to hybrid students. Whatever the underlying rationale for the change, the result is that our children's best interests have not been prioritized. To rectify this, we expect that we will be provided a Full Remote Plan consistent with the best education practices for virtual learning, one that mirrors that presented at the time of our decision to select remote learning. Item 2, the timeline for transition to hybrid in the family's home school has been dramatically and abruptly changed. The new plan has disrupted the school communities, and there appears to have been little effort given to keep students together in their existing peer networks. Beyond this, there's no plan to reconnect these communities and peer networks. Based on the return to school presentation on August 18th, 2020, parents understood that if a family wanted to switch their child from remote model to the hybrid model before the end of the first trimester, it may not be possible, or the child may not be placed in their home neighborhood school. There was no such indication that after the first trimester, a student would be unable to return to their home neighborhood school. Given that some families have students reporting to two or more elementary schools now, this issue is amplified and would create a situation where families would need to drive children to two or more schools when returning to hybrid or full in-person learning when we are at that moment. There also will be negative implications on our students' social, emotional well-being by not returning to the school they feel safe and connected to. We ask that the school committee and superintendent develop a plan that efficiently reconnects students currently in the Winchester Remote Academy to their home schools, and addresses concerns of families that do not know which principals to communicate with, and now may be required to communicate with multiple elementary school principals. Item 3, there is no organizational representation for the Winchester Remote Academy. While we understand the need to have teachers from different schools teaching Full Remote students, we are seeing major challenges emerge as individual families are finding that they have two or three principals managing multiple children being taught at different elementary schools. The result will be either miscommunication, or more likely, parents copying all educators and administrators in each communication, adding to the workload of an already overburdened staff. In order to manage the Full Remote Option and maintain communication, we think it's essential that there be a single principal designated to oversee the Winchester Remote Academy, and a Full Remote Parent Action Committee established to support this principal and the Full Remote educators and support staff. Parents of the Winchester Remote Academy are eager to help, in whatever ways are needed, to help make the remote learning experience the best it can possibly be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Webb. And thank you to all the parents who signed on to that letter. It's not normally the case that we would respond to a public comment when it comes in, necessarily during public comment, but I would like to give Dr. Evans an opportunity to respond, since that letter was received to us several days ago, and I know she's had some ongoing communication, so Dr. Evans, if you have anything you'd like to respond now, I would ask the rest of the committee, this is not a discussion, we can discuss this during the later on agenda items, but I would like to give Dr. Evans an opportunity to respond now.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you very much. It's been very helpful to me to have the Full Remote parents contact me with some suggestions which are well-received in relation to better supporting their children during this very unusual and difficult pandemic year. The, as I've communicated with all K5 parents several times in the last few days, there were some misconceptions in the original letter, especially the section on returning to home schools, which I'm not sure where that came from. That plan has not changed from the inception. Students need to return to home school for hybrid. We'll do it as soon as is possible and practical. And if we have spaces available, we're limited in the number of spaces we have in the hybrid classrooms, but certainly we will try to return students to their home schools as soon as possible. In the event that there's a vaccine and we're all able to return, we'll have some difficult decisions to make around reshuffling students and teachers and reassigning them to home schools. The other point that the letter makes about communication and ensuring that students are connected to their home schools is all very important. I agree with those, and we'll continue to work on strategies to be sure students feel connected to their schools, that there's a clear line of communication from the home principal, if that's the person parents are most comfortable communicating with. Many of our teachers are newly assigned to Full Remote and not having had experience at an individual school, or are in fact physically working from a different school. The whole process of taking our 110 K5 elementary classrooms and making 24 Full Remote, and the remainder under the hybrid scenario has been extremely challenging for us in relation to scheduling. And unlike a lot of scheduling that happens in a typical year, where the teachers and support teachers and specialists who support individual students are located in the same building, and the process for integrating those services is pretty invisible to most parents, because a lot of the services are push-in, or students can be regrouped as colleagues confer with each other. We were surprised to find that when we started scheduling both hybrid and Full Remote students, that there were a lot of restrictions on availability of staff and having the right staff and the right students together at the right time. And so, I have apologized for the unexpected communication related to assigning students to groups for the Full Remote. It's not our intention to keep most students in those same groups. We are meeting as a group of hybrid, as Full Remote teachers. I'm meeting with all the Full Remote teachers tomorrow, in fact. And I'll report back to you around the schedule for how quickly we can begin to do what we always intended to do, which was group students for services for educational purposes in their core academic classes by student need, as we do every day in our typical elementary classrooms in terms of center-based work. Both the hybrid students and the Full Remote students are having a very unusual year, and we'll have a very unusual year. The way our elementary classrooms work is very flexible. There's not a lot of whole-class instruction. There's a lot of grouping and regrouping in centers based on student need, based on additional services like reading support coming into the classroom every day. And it's going to be difficult to do both of those things, both for our hybrid students who can't really work in small groups very well, and for Full Remote students who need to be regrouped by Zoom. Some of our Full Remote classrooms have as many as 10 specialists supporting them, and the students in those classrooms have a lot of required services, both special education, English learner, counseling, reading. And so, the majority of students who don't have some of those special services will be able to be more flexibly grouped over the course of the week. So I'll work with the Full Remote teachers to strategize around that and communicate with the parents. We'll also be establishing a parent advisory group for the Full Remote classrooms, to be sure that we get feedback. And we will be looking for parent feedback, K-12, under all forms of learning, within the next couple of weeks. We'll be putting out a survey to see how it's going. We learned a lot from our survey that we used last spring, when we went to remote learning without any warning. I think we've done a really good job preparing teachers for what is to come in the fall, but certainly, we're open to suggestions, and we want to know how it's going for students, and we want to know pretty quickly. So in summary, as I said in the two communications I sent late last week to all K5 parents, I'll be working with the Full Remote teachers to regroup students as quickly as possible for core academics, especially for literacy and math, over the course of the week, so that students aren't on a Zoom all day. And there may be some students whose schedules are more restricted because they receive services that happen on a certain day at a certain time, but for most students, we have more flexibility for core academics and don't necessarily need to group by cohort. So we'll work on that in coming days, and as quickly as possible, transition to that.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I'm gonna resume with public comment, and I will allow to talk Mia Curly. Mia Curly, if you could state your name and address for the committee?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay. It's actually Jessica Curly. Mia is my daughter. So, I would like to read a letter on behalf of a group of 10 Morocco and Lynch parents for the purpose of public record, and I'll submit it to Dr. Evans and the school committee this evening.
Please proceed.
Dear Dr. Evans, Chair of Navlia, Ms. Bergstrom, Ms. Bollinger, Ms. Marshant, and Mr. Nixon. Since June, a group of Morocco and Lynch parents have been inquiring about the capabilities of our HVAC systems to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. We appreciated being able to meet with Dr. Evans, Pete Lawson, and District and DPW staff last Thursday to discuss our questions. We recognize that all involved have been working tirelessly in preparation for the school year. We want to publicly acknowledge the commitment of Mr. Lawson, the DPW, and the custodial staff to the safety of our students, teachers, and staff. We feel strongly that a district, the district should facilitate a public and transparent conversation about HVAC limitations and capabilities, especially as cold temperatures bring on a new set of challenges for buildings during this pandemic. In the absence of specific guidelines by DESI, we ask that the COVID-19 recommendations consistently cited by the EPA, CDC, the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, and Harvard Chansville Public Health be used in considering our HVAC system's ability to inhibit or promote the spread of COVID-19. We believe that while general maintenance and air quality has been looked at, the central role of aerosolized particles in the spread of COVID-19 has not been accepted by the district, and crucial mitigation measures have not been operationalized. We request that the building reports related to COVID-19 be accessible and updated on the District COVID-19 website and through school committee meetings. As an example, Needham's District has created an HVAC Rapid Response Team, so that teachers have someone to contact with ventilation concerns, and they have also created a public webpage devoted to building maintenance. The link is in the letter. We thank the school committee for the opportunity to express our concerns and for your continued work on behalf of our school committees, or communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you could state your address for the record, I didn't catch it at the beginning.
Sure. My address is 12 Clamata Street, and it's Jessica Curly.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, and if I, I could ask those of you who I'm going to, and if I I've I could ask those of you who have. Already spoken to lower your hands, it'll just make my life a little easier when I go to look over there. Um. I'm going to elevate Kinsey Gensler, if you could state your name and address for the committee? And it says you're muted. Kinsey, you are muted?
You'll hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Kinsey Gensler and I reside at thirty eight Everett Avenue. Um, I would like to just read a statement. Um. Uh, eh, that I prepared earlier before Dr. Evans's comments. Um, some of the statement remains, uh, other things have been addressed, but if you would um indulge me, I will read my statement. I would like to begin by thanking the school committee, the superintendent's office. School principals and school staff who have worked tirelessly to address the issues of educating Winchester students under very unusual circumstances. I joined the meeting tonight to voice my concerns with the remote learning model rolled out last week. As mentioned earlier, this remote learner uh learning model is significantly different from the one presented in this forum by Dr. Evans. Agreed upon by the school committee and submitted to DESI. It is not the model shared in August and it is not the one that influenced my decision to continue to have my child learn remotely. While I share concerns about the abrupt change, the concentration of core curriculum into two longer days of synchronous learning. And the resulting increased screen time required. My greatest concern is for the social and emotional well being of students learning remotely. It seems that little consideration had been given to consolidating students from neighborhood schools into remote classes. Removing students from their neighborhood school and placing them into classes with few to no other student peers has been a considerable stressor. Applying the cohort schedule to these remote classes further separates student peers. Through the development of the remote learning classrooms, the assignment to different principles and the inability of students to return. To hybrid model to their neighborhood schools effectively removes children and families from their neighborhood community, school communities. I believe that this and other stressors mentioned tonight can be mitigated by returning to the remote model originally presented August fourth. Again, I thank everyone for their hard work. Many parents of remote le- learners have already offered solutions. And many more stand by to collaborate to make a successful school year for all. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to elevate Claudia Mitchell. Uh, if you would state your name and address for the committee, uh, thank you.
Hi, my name is Claudia Mitchell. Um, I live at eighteen Chester Street in Winchester, Massachusetts. My son uh last year started kindergarten and it was a pretty good experience, all things. When Zoom hit, uh, oh, sorry, when COVID hit, we, I was able to get him to concentrate. With me standing over him for thirty to forty-five minutes at a time. In terms of getting work done, it was near impossible. Um, I had a very flexible teacher who I uh, who I value very much for all the encouragement and support she gave us. I do not see how it is possible, especially without me hovering. For him to do three hours on the off days of curriculum of the side stuff. And I, and considering the fact that I know many adults who don't do Zoom meetings over an hour and a half, I think it's an unrealistic expectation. I do understand that the committee is not in charge of making the schedule. But I would wonder who's a th- if it needs to go before you guys before massive plans change and who has the right to do that? And what that process is, and if it states somewhere that parents must be informed. We were asked to give a binding decision and at that time we were, we believe we were signing up for a binding statement. And that has not been true. And I feel if this was going to change as soon as there was a thought that it should change, we should have been notified immediately. All that being said, as a parent, I know a fair amount of other parents and I would be, I would enjoy the opportunity. To have a list of all the other first grade parents, all the ones who don't have I E Ps. And we we work the schedule or fiddle around with people who don't have things changed. I think. There's a huge untapped market of parent help and support that we can provide and we. Would love to provide that and help out. I know this is hard for everyone. I would never want to have to write a schedule for this many kids by hand. It seems like torture. But now that it's here, I think you have a lot of people willing to help and who want to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much as well. I am going to allow to talk. Steven Schwartz, I can't see the rest of your name because it got gets cut off. If you could say your name and address for the committee, my apologies for anybody's name I butchered tonight.
Hi, yes, my name's Steven Schwartzberg and I reside at twenty-one Plymouth Road. Um, I want to address a couple of things that Dr. Evans has stated over the last couple of weeks. Uh, first is we always plan for both hybrid and remote students to have similar teacher contact hours for core academics. While this may indeed be true, it was never expressed to the parents when the options were presented and a binding decision was required of us. It also seems like a misguided plan. Children being taught remotely are going to face different challenges and difficulties than hybrid students. Remote students are likely to require additional time and attention to learn the same material as the in-person students. Information does not simply transfer through a screen as easily. I along with other parent parents were under the impression that one of the advantages of remote over hybrid. Was that students would get more face-to-face time with their teachers to learn the materials. I don't believe that ten hours of in-person instruction equals ten hours of remote instruction in terms of the student's ability to learn and apply lesson. The goals here should not be to match hours of teaching, but to teach our children to the best of our abilities. Remote and hybrid are different and should be treated differently. More importantly, parents were presented options and were asked to make a binding decision. After we made that decision, one that was excruciatingly difficult for that matter, the options were changed. This wasn't communicated to the parents until our new teacher sprung the information on us. Requiring the teachers to be in an uncomfortable position of breaking bad news to a lot of angry parents, not a good way to start a relationship with a new class. Parents are now locked into a choice that many would not have chosen. It's too late to change. I'm sure Dr. Evans cannot place some hundred K through five students in a hybrid programs in the next twelve hours. Let alone if the next few weeks, if the parents were given the option to change. This is textbook beaten switch and is unacceptable. This was because Dr. Evans stated, we did not realize how difficult the process would be. Remote parents have felt like the remote schooling has been an afterthought and this kind of seems to validate that point. Of course, this is going to be difficult. The whole process is difficult and if the intention was always for equal time and equal circumstances. Then this option should have been presented or at least mentioned when it came to light that it may happen. The direction of remote schooling needs change, needs to be steered back towards the model that was presented to parents. This means spread the lessons out over five days, remove the cohorts. I don't believe the classes must be divided, but if they absolutely must, then a morning afternoon division maintains a five-day a week teaching plan. And provides the eighty split, that makes more sense. The students need more teacher time and less choice board time. I urge the school committee and Dr. Evans to reevaluate the remote program. And move swiftly to change the program to effectively teach our children in a model that reflects the option presented to us when we were asked to choose between hybrid and remote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have four or five more people and I'd like to try to get to the, we have one, two, three, four, five people. I'd like to get to all five of you. So if your hand is raised now, I will get to you. If it's not, I may not be able to. Um. Mister Tom Hopcroft, if you could say your name and address for the committee?
Can you hear me now?
Hear you well, yes.
Great. Hi, uh, my name is Tom Hopcroft and I live with my wife Victoria and our two young sons at ninety-nine Pond Street. Uh, I first want to thank you at, for the opportunity to say a few words and thank you for the many hours you're dedicating. To ensuring that our kids have the best uh education possible as well as social and emotional support. I'd also like to thank all the teachers who are turning their lives upside down to adapt and innovate in this new environment. You truly are the town treasure. So my wife and I wanted to address the issue of inequities, both within our town and between our town and neighboring communities. We're concerned that decision-making about education and well-being of our children is being influenced by pressure from DESI. Um, you know, an agency that prioritizes returning kids to school over education and social emotional well-being. And by a majority opinion philosophy propped up by poorly designed surveys. We addressed the school committee over a month ago about the survey design and the need to gather demographic information. On race, socioeconomic status, health concerns, special needs, essential worker status, et cetera, when surveying parents and teachers. So as reported in the Boston Globe just this last week, different communities are experiencing the pandemic quite differently. Black and Latinx residents, for instance, test positive at three times the rate of white residents and have significantly higher death rates. We can see evidence of socioeconomic differences in our town through the opinions of parents at our elementary schools. Parents in the less affluent parts of town, as represented by Morocco and Lynch, choose remote at a rate of thirty-four percent. As compared with those in the more affluent parts of town, as represented by Ambrose, Lincoln, and VO that choose remote at rates in the thirteen to nineteen percent range. We would like to find, uh, we would likely find other differences if we looked at special needs, at-risk families, essential workers, and other demographic subsets of our town. But rather than seeking this information, which can be gathered in ways that protect privacy. We make our decisions blind to what's happening in our community based solely on the aggregate majority or popular opinion. In so doing, we forego the opportunity to provide equitable education to a diversity of communities that are represented in our town. Um, and also, uh, I see I'm running low on time, so I'm gonna skip a few paragraphs here, uh, I'll send this to you, but wanted to uh weigh in on. On the letter that was mentioned earlier and say that, you know, we also believe that the full remote schedule should be returned to the one with core classes every day. Um, as well as um, uh, that was shared with parents a few weeks ago. Um, this is more appropriate for online learning environment. Furthermore, uh, neighboring towns are doing core classes every day and we don't want to hold Winchester students back. And create inequities as our town falls behind the neighboring towns. Uh, I'd like to thank um Dr. Evans for committing tonight to creating a a full remote pack and um. Uh, would be happy to uh participate that in that and I encourage you all to um, to to really tap the parent community. We have a lot of expertise. Not only in things like communications and research and survey design and all that kind of stuff, but we've all in our day jobs. Been adapting to COVID in this whole COVID world and so we ha- we can bring a lot of resources and a lot of expertise if you, if you're willing to tap into us. And I see the uh hand signal there, so I will say thank you very much and uh uh good luck and thank you for all the work you guys are doing.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to elevate Ryan M. If you would state your name and address for the committee?
Hi, uh, Ryan McCourt, twenty-three Sunset Road.
Thank you, we appreciate you well.
Excellent. Um, thank you very much for for hearing me and thank you to Dr. Evans for all the tireless hours she's put in to get this all all set up. We got an email today about um that choice boards would not be graded or evaluated. Uh, at least for first and second grade. And um, I don't know how the the students are going to be evaluated on a remote basis through Zoom. Without any homework that's going to be evaluated or reviewed. There's a lot of hours going into choice boards and I don't know how you can evaluate that work. Um, or 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 their progress without reviewing that. Um, I did also want to touch on on something that Dr. Evans said a little earlier that um. That the students may be flexibly scheduled if they didn't have. Uh, specialists that they were dealing with and it just seems like the students who aren't dealing with specialists are being flexibly scheduled an awful lot. And that's what's driving a lot of this, so uh I did want to express that little bit of frustration. Um, and that's all I had. I I I want to thank everyone on the board and and particularly Dr. Evans for all the hours she must have put in to get this all going. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to elevate, talk. Uh, Susan DeLeo, Ms. DeLeo, if you'd say your name and address for the committee?
Hi, good evening. This is Susan DeLeo, twenty-four Attack Drive. Uh, thank you all. We're almost uh there tomorrow for the first day of school. Uh, my children are in the hybrid program. I too received an email this afternoon regarding the choice boards where we were told that. None of the work in the choice boards is intended to be turned into a teacher and that is a quotation. Um, that was really disappointing because the choice boards make up. Most of Thursday, Friday, and much of Wednesday programming for an AA cohort student. Um. What are the children, these K through five learners especially, supposed to do with this work? How are they supposed to be motivated? Um, young children are not intrinsically motivated to do work. They're intrinsically motivated to. Engage with their peers and to please their teachers. Well, if nobody's looking at it, what's the point of this work? This seems, and I believe that this also affects the remote, full remote learners as well. So this seems an awful lot like the spring remote learning program. Where my children would do work and nobody would comment on it. Um, it's just a very disappointing way to start. The new school year knowing that the majority of the time my children will be working on work that no one cares to look at. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Uh, we have three remaining hands and I will get to all three remaining hands and then I will close public comment. So I'm going to elevate uh. Lu- uh Luciana Ballard, if you would say your name and address for the committee? Again, my apologies if I messed up your name.
Oh, it's uh Luciana Ballard.
Okay.
And I'm at three seventy-nine Washington Street. Um, we have a. A fifth grader that is in the full remote and my comment is that. We heard several times how concerned school um would make comments about the social, emotional. Um, you know, uh, situation that kids would be put through um by going to the remote model. And when I see that my daughter was put out of her homeschool with some classmates, yes. Uh, but all of them are boys. And uh, there's not another female uh child in any cohort with her. When she's an only child and our community, Morocco, is very essential to her well-being. It's very disappointing to see that none, no thoughts were put into that. To consider the social, emotional issues that these children are going to struggle with. Um, and yes, it's great that she's gonna get to meet some kids from the other home schools and, you know, and she'll eventually get to meet them. When she's at McCall, but in the last year when we've been in Morocco since kindergarten. To be pulled completely out and not have any of her female friends at all. In the classroom with her is very disappointing and it makes me question like if the social emotional piece. Was really thought through. Um, I'm a mental health counselor, so I understand a lot about mental health. And the issues that comes with not being part of a community and that is a big struggle for me right now to understand. Why um, this was not considered uh one group in these kids uh in different home schools. Thank you. I appreciate the time and um I hope that, you know, as it was discussed, there may be some changes will be made. Uh, in the next couple of weeks to try to address some of these issues that all of us parents are bringing up about the remote model. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments and I, we have two more raised hands. I'm going to allow to talk Pamela Court, Ms. Court, if you would state your name and address for the committee?
Hi, uh Pamela Court, Arlington Street, our um, I have two high school students. So I'm not going to, I I'm I'm not really in a position to speak about the um elementary. Um, there are two things I want to address. The first is um. I want to thank everybody on the committee and everybody in the administration for the incredible amount of hard work that I know that you all have done. It's unbelievable um the endeavor that you've had to undertake and um it's. It's not an easy process and it's not going to be easy as school opens, so I do appreciate that. I wanted to let you all know um my experience with dealing with the high school. When we had a few snafus and I just wanted to, I don't know if you always get, um, you know, you hear a lot of complaints, but I don't know if you always get. The the positive feedback, so I wanted to let you know that the special education staff reached out to me promptly. Said they were gonna do something and they did it very quickly, the guidance. said they were gonna do something and they did it very quickly, the guidance department. I had an issue with a mistake on the schedule. I had to send something to a guidance counselor that I thought was my daughter's guidance counselor. It turned out to be the wrong one. Forwarded it to the correct person. They got back to me very quickly and fixed it. Another mistake came up. It was fixed within like an hour. Um, and I've been contacted by the assistant principals as well. So I have to say I'm really impressed with the responsiveness that I've personally received when I've had to deal with any issues. And admittedly, my issues have been fairly minor. Um, but I didn't have to wait for anything. They were, they were all on top of it and, um, including the, the person who's providing service to one of my children. So I'm really pleased with that and I just wanted to make sure that you all knew about that. The second thing I wanted to comment on was a deep appreciation for the school committee members for sometimes having to ask the hard questions and speak up and sometimes ask questions that are difficult and sometimes not easy questions. It's not, it's not a simple process. It's, it's not an easy process. And it wouldn't be a good or a robust process if everybody agreed with one another one hundred percent of the time. Best decisions come out of having things be questioned so that everybody can reconsider here, all of the different opinions and all of the different points. And then really consider things with an open mind. And so I just want to make sure that school committee members know and, um, and really feel how much parents, because I've heard from so many other parents, how much they appreciate that. How much parents really do appreciate you going through that process and sometimes asking the difficult questions and putting yourself in a position where you might not be in agreement with others and having the difficult conversations. It's so important to be able to do that for the best decisions to be made. And parents and community members noticed it and appreciated it. So I, I, I wanted to make that clear as well. So thank you all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Court. I'm going to return you and with that, we have one more, uh, piece of public comment. Uh, Sarah Gerardi, Ms. Gerardi, if you'd state your name and address for the committee.
Hi, everybody. It's good to see you. I'm Sarah Gerardi at fourteen Winthrop Street. Uh, this year I have a hybrid senior and a hybrid freshman. As some of you know, I am a former teacher and a former school committee member, so I'm feeling your, uh, pain from all sides. Uh, I wanted two seconds to just say that I'm profoundly grateful for all of your time and effort and love shown for our students. That goes for the school committee, the administration, all of our teachers and support staff, everyone that has put in hundreds and thousands, literally, hours into doing what you can to make this, um, insane situation the best for all of our kids. I know that you are in this, um, for no other reason than to have our kids grow up to be fantastic and productive members of society. And I just, I'm so impressed by your incredible planning. I'm humbled by your dedication. Um, so thank you. And I just wanted to leave you with what I keep saying to my kids. Um, you're not gonna get everything that you want. But trust me, you're at school in Winchester and you're going to get everything that you need. So we're all in this together and I'm excited to partner with you guys and I'm really, really psyched for a great year. So thank you for everything.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gerardi. I went disabled talking and I would like to thank all of the members of the community who spoke tonight about both the difficulties they're having, about the struggles and about the successes they're seeing. Uh, we are a better committee and the administration is better for hearing from all of you. So thank you very much. I mean that. We, we actually do need to hear from people who are having troubles and we need to actually also enjoy hearing from people who've had success. It goes both ways. Um, with that, I will close public comments. And, uh, with the committee's, uh, permission, I would like to also take one, a second item out of order, which would be the vote to accept the WIFI grants. Cause I would like to see if, um, if Ms. Connolly is here, if she's um, able to, uh, let me, uh, she is here there, um, because I value her time as well and I would like to, uh, not take too much. So I would like to, uh, hold on, lost in my paperwork here. Judy, can I take it over to you to tee this off, please, while I get lost in my paperwork?
Sure.
Thank you.
Be happy to. This is my fault because I didn't pageinate before I sent you the packet. I'm like, uh, when Frida does it, she paginates and I can go to her, uh, certain page. So, um, uh, I see Karen Connolly's here and if she wants to unmute herself. Um, it's been a long time since we've, um, had, uh, our friends from WIFI come and, uh, be able to speak before us, but I can assure you that behind the scenes, they've been unrelentingly supportive, positive, encouraging. Um, and, uh, ready to do whatever it takes to help us through this pandemic crisis. Uh, Karen's going to present information regarding grants for teaching tolerance, which as, um, you heard earlier tonight, are, um, increasing, uh, awareness and focus on equity and social justice, uh, has greatly expanded our requirement for teachers to participate in active anti-racist training. So Karen can talk about that. Also, uh, WIFI's generously provided, um, financial support for elementary kits for students. We've really struggled this year with getting, uh, our supply list reasonable so that we're ready at any moment to go full remote if we need to, um, and that students have what they need in class uh, and at home without sharing, um, supplies. Um, and then other professional development. Jen Ellen Emma has, um, spoken, um, in previous meetings about how incredibly invested teachers are, uh, in putting in thousands of hours this summer and in the spring in professional development. So, um, Karen, I don't know if you'd like to speak about each of the three, um, very generous grants that the school committee is, um, looking to vote to accept tonight.
Well, I think, thank you very much, Dr. Evans. You pretty well summarized, um, exactly what it is that we're giving the money for. I guess the only thought I would have is as we look back at twenty twenty, I think twenty twenty obviously will be remembered as the year of COVID. But it will also be remembered as the year that we as a country had to begin to come to some sort of reckoning about elements of our past that, um, needed to have been dealt with for many years. And that's why we were very happy to support the funding for teaching tolerance. You know, I think when we first looked at some of the requests, we were also focused on how are you gonna make remote learning work? That at first we were like, wait, wait, you know, teaching tolerance, let's, let's get to that next year. But as we thought it through and talked about, obviously you can get to more than one thing in a year. And clearly the district is committed to doing that and we're happy to be with the district and committed to doing that as well. And of course, the funding that went to help teachers figure out remote learning and deal with all of the different options they have. We're very happy to give because we know that, um, there's been a lot of work done this summer on that and there's still a lot left to do. Um, funding for the, the kits, I think will come in handy. So again, we're very happy to give this gift. We are very grateful, um, for everything that our teachers and the administration have been doing for so long. So, you know, I would echo many things that have been said tonight from perhaps who did say, we get it. This is a hard year and, um, we're not all gonna be happy with what we get and we're not all gonna be happy about where we are, but we all have to work to make it, to make it work. And I think our students are definitely leading the way with doing that. So please accept this gift and know that, um, as things settle down over the next few weeks or few months and the district can see what other needs you have. Um, we do stand ready to, to meet those needs as you present.
Thank you very much, Ms. Connolly. Um, before I open it up to questions and comments from the committee, um, I, I, I can't thank you enough for your, your, on behalf of WIFI's continued, um, commitment to the public schools and the students at Winchester. Um, these grants, um, are just the tip of the iceberg of what you have donated over the past years. Um, so, thank you. Questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Bollinger.
I just wanted to echo what Brian was saying, what Mr. Vinalia was saying about thank you so much, um, for pivoting so quickly uh, with the grants to help us with teaching tolerance and some of the professional development programs for our staff uh, and educators. I was able to attend one of the teaching tolerance workshops last week on facilitating conversations um, with students and it was just fascinating and really rewarding to hear how teachers and, how concerned teachers and staff were and, um, the different issues that they grappled with and the tools that they were learning about to help make these conversations happen and to increase participation. I wish I'd been able to go to some of the others, but just even the one that I was able to go to was really amazing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bollinger. Other questions or comments from the committee?
Just thank you. Thank you for all you do and for having such a great relationship with the, um, administration and, um, being in tune with, um, what they need and what the students of Winchester and the teachers of Winchester need. I know that this is, um, probably gonna be a tough year for WIFI too. And every dollar we get from you counts for us as it does, um, is it meaning, as it is meaningful for you to donate to us. So I really appreciate the partnership that we have with you because we know that, um, the money will be well used too.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Other questions or comments? Ms. Marshat?
I was just gonna offer to make the motion.
Ah, I, I would welcome that if there are no more questions or comments from the committee.
I move to accept with deep gratitude the WIFI grants totaling seventeen thousand five hundred as presented.
I second.
Moved and seconded, uh, require a roll call vote because of our remote format. Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Uh, I, I will reiterate, thank you. Uh, I'm not good at saying thanks, other than just being straight out and saying thank you for all that you do. We really appreciate it and the students in Winchester appreciate it as well.
Uh, thank you very much. And again, um, you know, we appreciate clearly all of the very hard work that's going on and all of our teachers who are figuring out how to make this work. You're, you're flying the plane while you're building it and you're trying to land it when you're figuring out where to put the landing gear in. So it's all gonna work.
Runway two. So with that, we will move back to the regular order of agenda, which is, um, uh, moving back to reports and discussion items, uh, COVID nineteen metrics, protocols from the health department. I want to see if Ms. Murphy and or, uh, uh, Dr. Bhatari are available. I know that there was a talk of them being, um, actually I, uh, let me, uh,
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. I'm trying to promote you to an attendee, a participant, panelist. I'm not able to do that. Ms. Bollinger, are you able to elevate, um, Dr. Bhatari to being a?
That's okay. I don't need to be seen.
If, if, if you're okay, then I can just live with this and we won't spend a lot of time fighting with Zoom.
Perfect. Yeah, um, it's fine. I'm in my pajamas anyhow. I'm Jennifer Murphy. So Jennifer Murphy had a family emergency. She's very, um, apologetic that she couldn't be here. Um, I will text her right now just to let her know that I'm starting to speak. Um, in case she does get a minute to pop on out of her emergency, but, um, I'm speaking now. Okay. Um, but otherwise I'm here and I just wanted to give the, um, Board of Health and COVID update um, per requested as our amendment that you guys had asked for. Um, the first thing I just wanted to say was that we still have just one active case. Um, that's since last week. It's the same number and the same case that we had as of last week. Um, so that's good. Things are, um, great for, for that right now. Um, and mostly the second order of business was, um, the document, uh, that was sent to the school committee that went over not necessarily the metrics, um, specific metrics per se for school closings, um, but more so the key indicators and the scenarios, uh, which would trigger a discussion and consultation with the superintendent and of course the school committee as well. And that, um, those documents, you, maybe you could put them up. Um, and we don't even necessarily go right into the weeds because there are multiple, multiple scenarios that are given in these with exact raw numbers and with percent positivity, but it really ranges from one case to multiple cases. Uh, low transmission to high transmission situations, one case.
So I will let you continue while I, while I do that. So.
Yeah, sure. Um, basically, um, my point is the document is an internal document of the health department. Jessica Pfefferman has been amazingly helpful in putting together this document. Primarily, it's been her that's been in charge of this with Jen Murphy, who's the director of, uh, the Board of Health. So it's mostly been the two of them that have worked tirelessly around the clock to put this document together. Um, for really, um, everybody to see, so we can sort of have the same expectations as a group and as a community. But again, with the caveat that this is not an exact metric of exactly what would happen. This is more scenarios or key indicators that will trigger discussions and consultations with the superintendent. Because of course.
You can see if I put up the document because I can't tell if, if you can see it now.
Yep, that's it. One of the, one of the main things is that, um, that the superintendent, before any further closure, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, has to discuss with, um, with DESI, um, before any further closures happen based on these key indicators or scenarios that were given. And again, um, again, we don't need to get into the exact weeds of what percentages and what raw data, but, um, it, again, it's just a, it's a starting point. It's not necessarily set in stone. We want to make that clear for the public. Um, and we, you know, it's a starting point for more discussions and triggers. So I'll just leave that as my first comments and, um, if there is any specifics regarding the exact numbers that are on there, I may defer to Jessica Pfefferman, who may be on the call. We could probably elevate her hand as well, um, if that's possible. Otherwise, um, I'll be here for any other of it, you know, other.
I was able to elevate Ms. Murphy. I don't know if you are now on, Ms. Murphy.
I am. Hi, thank you. I just caught the tail end of that. Thank you so much, Shannon. You did, did a great job giving, giving an overview from what I heard. Um, I, I don't want to repeat necessarily what you said, um, but, uh, I'm sure you explained that the scenarios do uh, vary from, uh, the lowest point of sort of transmission that we would see to the greater point of transmission throughout the community as a widespread, uh, as widespread, uh, cases occur. So, and you'll have everything in between in these scenarios here. And then associated with those scenarios, you'll see the key data points or indicators that would trigger certain, uh, discussions with the superintendent and she would have a host of actions to choose from, from, uh, that point forward. And a lot of the basis for this document is from DESI and DPH protocols. However, we did expand on that because they were lacking in further detail. So, so we did, um, enhance their protocols to what suited our needs and our comfort level the best, um, within Winchester. And I do appreciate the questions and comments that we did receive over the past week because it certainly did enhance the document. And, um, you know, it certainly made it better. And I would like to thank, I don't know, Shannon, did you thank Jessica? She was, uh, incredible in helping finalize this, this draft document here. And I will say it is still in draft form only because, um, you know, every day, well, not every day, but, but almost every day it seems like these state protocols do get, uh, changed in some, some way. They do tweak what their recommendations are. So we will keep this, uh, fluid to adapt to what they tell us. Um, or what they recommend for us to do in town here. And Judy, of course, uh, Dr. Evans, thank you so much for your, for your help. This is quite a collaboration and it will be an ongoing collaboration and much more in depth, uh, now that school is underway.
Thank you very much to both of you for what clearly a lot of work went into this. I've spent, uh, considerable amount of time reviewing it. I do, before I open up for.